It is now 6:05. We are having a work session. The Board of Education members here, we do not have a quorum. As Mr. Mosher is on the phone, but he doesn't count for a quorum because he is not physically First, I want to apologize to the teacher leadership team. You had invited us to the union office maybe a month ago. Five of us wrote back and said we would love to go. Three of us had emergencies with the families and we didn't make it. And other people that committed didn't make it. So I thought it was important, I've been to your other leadership meetings before, and your research is absolutely wonderful. It's pertinent. And I think you deserve, and we deserve, to hear what you have to say. And I want to honor all the work that you did. So I'm at this point going to turn it over to Gary Hoffman, as I believe he's head of the leadership team. I think you're one of the people who got the grant for the NTU. And I thank you for that. And I thank you for all the work you do. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to you at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. I really appreciate, on behalf of the teacher leaders, that Dr. Mosley and you and the Board of Ed were able to devote some time to listen to our research. Pat Johnson is the other facilitator along with James Graham, who couldn't be here tonight. This is the teacher leader's fourth year in the program. We've contributed a lot of different research projects, some of which have been implemented by the district over the years. And we're hoping some of the research that we present tonight could be useful to the district as we look towards strategic planning perhaps this summer and in the future. The projects you're going to hear tonight, I think, are really important because they're issues that need investigation. Because they're specifically the topics they have. You're going to hear some presentations about our ELL population that has increased tremendously over the past 10 years. You're going to hear a presentation about our special education program and how we welcome newcomers into this district, as well as how do we increase parent engagement. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over. Unless, Pat, would you like to say something?
So I've been a member of the teacher leader program for the past four years. It's a very rewarding program. It's something that has benefited the schools that we teach at and the district as a whole. So again, I just want to echo Gary's statement and say thank you very much for taking some time for these presentations.
So the first project we're going to hear about was by Sharon Saunders, who talks, going to talk to you a little bit about newcomer program. I'm going to let Sharon actually have my seat. And so here, Sharon Saunders.
I'm an ELL teacher at Nashua High School South. This is my 10th year in the Nashua school district. My research this year focused on creating an ELL newcomer program at the high school level. And that was driven really by the staggering increase in ELL students that we've had in the last 10 years. Since I started in Nashua, we've had a 250% increase in our ELL population. One of the most noticeable facts in that is not just the sheer number of students that have come, but the proficiency level of the students that we have come, that have arrived. So ELL is divided into six levels, with level one being the lowest level, students who are straight off the boat, to use the phrase, so new arrivals to the country that have no English. Level six students are students who are working almost on a par with their native English-speaking peers. What we have noticed over the last 10 years is in addition to the increase in numbers, our demographic has swayed towards the lower level proficiency students. So in my first year in Nashua, we had 56 students at Nashua High School South. We now have almost 160. Our students were predominantly levels four, five, and six. Now we have almost 100 students who are level one, two, and three. That has an enormous impact on the schedule for these students. Many of them cannot access anything outside of the ELL program because their language proficiency is simply too low. Many of them come from refugee camps or countries where they have been denied education. So they are learning and going through their educational process for the first time in a language that is not their own. That brings with it very unique skills. We contact our colleagues at the elementary school because we're teaching elementary skills. We're teaching schooling. I joke with my colleagues sometimes that sometimes we're moming more than we're teaching, but that is part and parcel of the students that we now teach. So to try and get a student who has never held a pen or pencil before through to graduation in four, five, or six years is quite a heavy task within the constraints of the current schedule. You know, "We simply have nowhere to put the students," is the phrase that I hear regularly from very frustrated guidance counselors. You know, when a guidance counselor says to me, "I can put him in gym and art and crafts again," then that's not a guidance counselor being obstructionist, that's a guidance counselor's frustration. We simply do not have the courses that are designed for these students. What we do have, a benefit of the Gate City Grant, is that since we completed the Gate City Grant, we were able to write courses for ELL math, ELL science, and ELL world studies. So that is because teachers joined the Gate City cohort and were willing to sit and write curriculum and address the needs of our ELL students. Unfortunately, those classes are capped at 20. So you have 20 students with seven different languages, with 20 different educational backgrounds, being put into a classroom to try and learn math. So we have very experienced teachers teaching those courses, but it is a challenge. So even though we have been able to create some courses to meet the needs of our students, we're still not really giving them a fair and equitable access to the curriculum. So my research really focused on what is a newcomer center. And I looked for the Center for Applied Linguistics for my data. They have, on their, they conducted research and on their website, they have an example of 65 exemplary newcomer programs that you can look at as a resource to say, what do these programs do? How do they meet the needs of their students? So that was the focus of my research, looking at how we could, within the constraints of our schedule, look at creating a newcomer center that would meet out the needs of our students, give them meaningful access to the curriculum, and give them a means to graduate. When a student is repeatedly put into a gym and art and craft class, they're not gaining So I have, I had some recommendations for how we could move ahead, how we could actually create a newcomer program. Our Director of Guidance at Nashua South has been very welcoming of any ideas and any suggestions. The phrase "think outside the box" has been thrown around regularly. People are willing, and administrators are willing, to listen to ideas. So I wanted to be able to use the teacher leader program as a way to conduct research that could provide those ideas for next steps.
Do you, do you want to take any questions?
Yeah, I'm happy if people wanted to take questions.
Okay, does anybody have questions at this point? I have one. How is block scheduling affecting your ability to offer these students more than gym and whatever else you, you can fit in there for them?
Block scheduling meets the allocated minutes that our students are required to have by the state. So at a surface level, we look like we're servicing our students and we're giving them all of the minutes of ESL instruction and language instruction that they need. But it, there's, it's not very flexible. You know, we're hamstrung sometimes by the block scheduling. It would be nicer if we could run some skinnies maybe, if we could team teach with a math teacher, if we could team teach with a social studies teacher, if they were possibilities within the curriculum. That would be, I think we need to look at the curriculum and be willing to be more flexible. If we could teach students on an AB day, we just need to be able to work with what we've got and be willing to make those decisions ahead of time and be flexible with the schedule.
Can I ask, do you have the resources you need?
The resources as in enough pencils to go around, enough paper to go around, enough teachers? This year, we cannot run our level six course. We had to give up our level six course. So the students at the highest level of language proficiency, who are on the cusp of testing out, will no longer be able to actually have an ELL level six course because we have too many students at the newcomer level one and two level. Our level two student schedules for next year are at maximum. And we know that when we have students who are new arrivals coming to the country, they come in at level one and level two. So when you ask if we have the resources that we need, we need teachers, and we don't have that. When you have 156, 250% increase in ELL students and a 1.2% increase in teaching staff over 10 years, there's a little bit of a discrepancy there.
I know that Dr. Mosley said-
I know you're smiling, and I know you're very supportive of our program.
Mr. Choper asked for four ELL teachers. There are two ELL teachers in the budget? Two? Three?
Memory serves it correctly, Madam President. I think we put, proposed three as part of the phasing in, but I would say, just at the high school and district-wide, it certainly, I concur with your commentary around the need for more ELL teachers. So I think it's two, I can't remember two or three, but it's in the budget.
We have caseloads of one teacher to 46 students at the high school. At the middle and elementary school, we have one teacher to 65 students. Just for reference, from my special education colleagues that I have spoken to, they think on average it's a one to 25 ratio. I can't quote that for sure. I need to do more research. But one to 46 is a little bit extreme. So we teach three blocks a day. In addition to teaching our three blocks a day, we are also case managers. Our job is to work with our students, to assimilate them into the country, to ensure that they understand what the academic rigor is of an American high school, and to work with their parents, which often means contacting interpreters of multiple languages. We simply don't have the time to do that when we have 46 students on our caseload.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I'd like to know, how would life skills play into, under level one, two, or three? Would that have an impact on them?
It definitely would. I mean, we, we have families that have never had access to washing machines that come to us. So we know that there are life skills that we're not just working with the student, we're working with the families as well. We have a phenomenal outreach coordinator. Unfortunately, she is split part-time between two high schools. In addition to being split between two high schools, she works extensively with families in the community. She puts on family information evenings. And in addition to that, she just found time to graduate from Plymouth University with her bachelor's in psychology. I don't know how she finds the time to do what she does, and we certainly spread her too thinly.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. Are you making home visits in the way that the elementary school ELL teachers-
Yes, we regularly use our planning periods to make home visits and after school, so that we can make home visits around our parents' schedules and their work schedules. So yes, that is a common part of our case management.
And in order to create and roll out a newcomer program like this, what would you need from the district to be able to actually engage in the kind of newcomer program that sounds like would be most beneficial to some of our students?
I think we'd need a viable working party over the space of six to eight months that could actually look at what we have, look at our student demographic, look at how we could create the newcomer program with the staff levels that we have. I'm sure if we are creative, we can use, so from some of the research that I have done, many school districts create a separate newcomer center. And they may gear the newcomer center for students from grade seven through to grade 12, and they base it upon language proficiency. Once students meet language proficiency of a certain level, then they transition back to their home school. From the research that I've done, that seems to be a way that is most cost-effective, that we can utilize teachers in a better way. And it certainly gives students a greater access to the curriculum. So I know there are financial implications of busing, moving students around the district, but there are many different models that we could examine in detail and look at what could work in Nashua.
Do you need anything from the board level, authorizing like a study, or is that something that you can do through this teacher leadership program?
I think it's something we could do through the teacher leadership program. I think I would need the support of the superintendent and Mr. Choper. And maybe, you know, other teachers that are interested, that are not just classroom teachers, or principals, assistant principals, who are in a position to effect change. Sometimes you feel as a classroom teacher that you can have the ideas, but you're not actually in a position to affect the change.
And the last question that I had was regarding your involvement, if any, with the Cultural Connections Committee that Mayor Donchess has. Is there any communication or shared work with the Cultural Connections Committee or the Adult Learning Center and some of the outreach that they're doing?
Really, that comes through our outreach coordinator. And I think she is involved in that. And we have other, you know, family members that are involved in that. But as teachers, well, as a teacher, I'm not directly involved in that. I'm not sure about my colleagues.
I imagine you don't have time to be going to all of these things. I'm just curious if that might be an avenue for additional resources.
It could be. The more resources we have and the more heads kind of we can put together, I think the more ideas we can come up with.
Thank you. Ms. Porter, do you have anything?
I'm wondering if there are any grants. I know that one of the things that's in the budget is a grant writer. And I think this would be an appropriate place for a grant writer to look for extra support. Is there, are you aware of any programs that could be applied?
So when I did my research, I talked to Gary Hoffman about next steps. So one of the things that I had thought about doing was signing up for the teacher leader program again next year, with the sole purpose of looking for grants and writing grants that could give us the financial resources that we need to establish a newcomer center.
Okay, so that, you're definitely doing that next year? That's a big undertaking.
I'm thinking about doing it.
Okay, all right. But that would be something that if there, you know, were an additional grant writer, this would be a good way to deploy that person.
Sorry to interrupt you. The difficulty with grants is that the newcomer center could be entirely dependent upon a grant. And when the grant expires, what happens to the newcomer center?
Well, a lot of times, the grant would come for maybe three years, and then it would be incumbent upon the district to pick up the costs. So it's kind of like seed money.
Yeah, so it might, you know, bridge the gap before we can get more ELL teachers through in the budget.
Right, it's not a long-term solution.
No.
But in the meantime, you have kids who are waiting for something.
I think we certainly have to look at all of our options. And looking for grants is definitely an option.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have anything that you'd like to ask?
Well, nothing in particular as far as something to ask, but I am certainly in awe of what they're trying to do. Having had experience with, you know, ELL and, you know, being around these people who always spoke to Spanish, that was a, you know, a burden for myself. And, you know, I, I'm thinking, I was thinking before of grants, but like she said, that you can get a grant for a year, two, three, and four maybe. And when it expires, it becomes incumbent upon the district to supply the money, but knowing this district, that is going to be an almost impossible task. So we have to look for someplace where there is a non-lapsing amount of money that would be available. And I was wondering if there would be something that would be on the federal level that would be appropriate for this endeavor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Raymond, you have another question?
Yes, I just had another quick thought. What's the matriculation rate for our ELL students? Do we know? I'm curious, how many of them actually finish high school with a diploma and then-
So up until now, our graduation rate has been high. I don't know the exact statistics on that. That's more research I would need to do. I just know that in the last few years, with the lower proficiency levels of the students that have arrived, we have more and more students aging out of the system. So ELL students are entitled to stay in school until they are 21. But many of our students are not able to meet the graduation requirements by the time they're 21. So we, for example, we do not, we have, we wrote a proposal for ELL math. We also wrote a proposal for ELL math two that has still not been presented because the math department is still short of teachers.
Yeah.
So there's a knock-on effect where if I, you know, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. You can't take teachers from one department when they don't have enough in their department. So we don't necessarily have all of the graduation courses at the level proficiency level that our students need to be able to graduate. So if you have a student who is a level two student and needs US history to graduate, that's a pretty tough order.
Right. Okay. And is there ever any consideration of doing, I know we have a number of languages. Is there any consideration or possibility of offering some of these more mainstream graduation requirement classes in a bilingual manner?
So New Hampshire is a one-language state. Bilingual education is a hot topic in the country right now. I believe Manchester has had a waiver to do some bilingual education with some students, but that would be ideal, in my mind. If we could teach a bilingual US history class, I would think that would be great. It does not, however, meet the needs of our Swahili speakers, or our Hinge speakers, or our Arabic speakers. So it doesn't solve all of our problems if we were able to have maybe an ELL US history. So there are many different solutions. We can't, you know, in my world, everything's possible. You know, in my little corner of the world, according to Sharon, we can do everything ELL to get all of our students through, and it'll all be very nice, and we have all the resources that we need. We have to be realistic about the constraints of a school and what we have available to us. But there are many different things that we could look at to ensure that our students have a fair and meaningful access to their high school career and their high school education, to mean that they can graduate based upon their language proficiency. And that was my whole base of my research, is looking at meaningful access to the curriculum, not just being able to put students in gym and art and crafts because they don't have the linguistic proficiency to take US history or algebra yet.
Okay. Thank you so much for sharing all of this with us again. Every time you speak, I, I feel a little overwhelmed by the needs of our students, but I also feel very encouraged about the passion that, you know, you're exhibiting for these kids. And I've spoken to some of the other ELL teachers, and I feel the same thing with them too. Like, it's overwhelming, but also so meaningful. So thank you so much.
Very meaningful. Thank you.
Ms. Porter?
What are we able to do to support the social and emotional well-being of students who are transitioning to a brand-new culture?
We have our outreach coordinator. Our outreach coordinator can connect with different groups. I know we've done a lot of work with the International Institute in New Hampshire, in Manchester, to be able to find interpreters and support groups for some of our students. We, we can use the church, you know, Catholic charities supports us a lot and offers resources for us. And then it's a case of contacting other people in the same situation. You know, as a new situation arises, or a new student from a new country arises, then we, we turn to our colleagues in other school districts to see who can help.
I would just like to add at this point, I've been on the board for a few years now, and the presentation that the ELL director, Mr. Choper, gave along with many of the teachers, maybe you were in the audience, was probably the best presentation I have ever seen at one of our budget meetings. The need is so great, and their desire to help all of the students is so deep, and the frustration level that they do not have time to work with students for the length of time that they need to, to move them forward is, it's painful to see them advocate for that, that we don't have the resources for that. And I compliment Dr. Mosley for making that a priority in the budget. And I'm so hopeful that that's something that we might be able to get in because the need has been documented by many, many. So I can't thank you enough. And to people listening, this is why we wanted to make sure that people heard the teacher leadership team, because what you're hearing is right from our school classrooms talking about the needs that our teachers need to help our kids move forward. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
So the next presenter is a special educator, Letitia Meehan. Before she comes up, I just want to talk briefly about her project. I showed it to a couple of special educators whom I know, and her research topic gets into some of the frustrations some of our special educators in the districts have had. And after these special educators saw her research, they kind of had this aha moment, like, that's everything we feel, and they're so thankful that someone took the time to really dig into this sort of stuff. So, Letitia, you want to come on?
So I am a special education teacher at Main Dunstable. I've been there for five years, and I love this district. So that's where I'm going to start. My name is Letitia Meehan. So I'm not here to talk about things that aren't being done well, but I'm here to talk about the frustration of my colleagues and why that might be happening. So the reason I did this study is because I was hearing from colleagues, who are dedicated people, who love their administrators, who enjoy their time with the students, who find their job fulfilling, but the frustration is just rising. And I, and I didn't understand it. So I wanted to understand it. And I started talking to people. And I wanted to really develop my questions. And the teacher leader program, I know you guys are on board with it, but I really found the mentoring so helpful and the provision of resources, so that I could really do a good job looking at the questions. I'm going to talk to you about my findings briefly, and also my potential responses. And then I would love to have a little bit of discussion at the end. The first thing I did, once I started talking to my colleagues, was sign up for teacher leaders. And then teacher leaders provided me with the Survey Monkey instrument. And I used that to kind of really formulate concrete questions to ask my colleagues. So I came up with 10 items, and the last one was open-ended, just asking for sort of open-ended feedback. But the first 10 were scalable on a Likert scale. I sent an invitation to 40 different special ed teachers at the elementary and middle school levels, and I received 30 responses. school levels, and I received 30 responses. What I found about our demographics is that the district has some pretty impressive special ed teachers. We had 50% in their first three years of teaching, but we had 57% who had total teaching experience of over 11 years. 85% have earned a graduate degree. And when you think about how many young teachers we have, the 50%, that it's an impressive number, who've already earned a master's and some have PhDs. So the first finding that came up was the paperwork from the Department of Ed has increased dramatically, and it impacts our instructional time, and people are very frustrated. And we just came through a compliance year, so there was, all our PD was spent on paperwork. And my professional development should be about my children and what they need to learn and my best way of teaching it, but we spend it all on paperwork. And I guess that's okay until the DOE representative looks at a room full of special ed teachers and says, "Paperwork is a tiny part of your job." And then we're all sitting there wondering why we just spent all of our PD for the last 14 months and an awful lot of meetings on paperwork, if it's such a tiny part. So there's something that's not connecting there for people. Oh, I missed finding one, sorry. All right. Yeah, I did, but it's not really... Oh, there we go. Okay. So that's the paperwork. The second finding was even more widespread. 90% of people noted that their time to train their paraprofessionals has decreased, and that lowers instructional quality because we depend on our paraprofessionals. It lowers time on task because people aren't sure of their expectations, and it creates a less effective classroom. What really breaks my heart is when colleagues who love teaching special ed leave the profession. And this is why they leave it, because they don't feel like they can do their job. I was excited to see there's a lot of great research on all the things that were coming up in my survey. So I've attached a bibliography there, and I gave you my contact information if you want copies of articles or any more information. I don't want to go into it too detailed tonight because I do want to have more time for input from you guys. So the response to the paperwork, we need to figure out how to delegate that and how to, because the legal compliance is of paramount importance, and we end up in court. It's part of special ed. So we can't just say paperwork's not important, because it is important. But I think we need to explore, how do we delegate that? How do we do that better? One possibility that I know happens in some districts is there are administrative assistant positions that serve special educators and help them with all the clerical duties. We're now having to mail everything to parents. Parents don't like it. It's very time-consuming, but it has to be done because of privacy issues. You know, there's a lot of clerical, there's a lot of filing, there's a lot of distributing, disseminating information to other colleagues that just takes hours of time that they could help with. The other plus I see with having those positions is instead of having to educate over 100 special educators about every new directive that comes down from the state or the local level, you can train the administrators, administrative assistants, to train the teachers. And you can train them, and they're doing a lot of it, you know, so you have fewer people that you have to train, because I find it's very cumbersome to get us all trained on every new directive and every new way that we're filling out some of the various pieces of paper. The second potential response I'm really excited about because it, quite frankly, is a lot more doable. We're not really talking about new positions in the district, which, you know, everybody can think of someone else who could help us get this huge job done that we do. This doesn't really involve more people. I would love to see us develop a process to train our paraprofessionals by the special education teachers, because they need to know the procedures in the classroom they're working in. So the PD that we're providing that's more general is also important, but paraprofessionals need to be trained by their own supervising teachers to a great degree. One thing that I had an aha moment while I was doing my research, we are not trained to manage staff members as teachers. We're trained in behavior management, we're trained in curriculum, we're trained in how to teach children with varying disabilities. We're not trained in how to manage our staff of paraprofessionals, you know? And one of the things I love about this district is I have lots of them, and I feel that I really am able to teach my students well. And I've taught in five states and lots of different types of schools, and this district gives me the most ability to teach my children well. But then I have to manage all those paraprofessionals, and I'm not trained to do it well. So I think providing some of that training to our teachers would be key. And one of the beautiful things I found was a free web-based training for teachers developed by University of Nebraska-Lincoln that we could utilize to train our teachers to train their paras, to make our paras more effective. And possibly, we would need fewer if we had better-trained paras and better connections between the staff and our classrooms. Lots of districts have created programs that help teachers train their paraprofessionals to make our classroom teams stronger and more effective. I personally am going to read a book on team training this summer, and I have to write training for my paras, because the miscommunication, it's pervasive, you know? And I don't have any moment when I have all my paras in the room. So I tell five paras while the other ones are somewhere else, and then, you know, things get missed. So my, one of my goals this summer is training for my paras that is concrete and visible, and I'm going to hand them a binder in August. One thing also that I would love to see, and this would be a small cost to the district, is some training time, and this would also have to be something we worked out with the contract and the union and all of that. But I would love to see us specify six hours of training for paras with their case managers before school starts, possibly six hours on Election Day, that those teachers who have trained to train their paras would have that six hours with their paras to train them, and then six hours of flex time that case managers and paras could plan together. Maybe it's one hour, one week, a month, you know, however works for that group of adults that year, so that it would be a flexible, flexible amount of time. So those are the ideas I have so far, and I would love to recruit some colleagues to flesh them out next year. Teacher leaders, again, is a great vehicle for that, if we're blessed to have that opportunity again. I'd love to have, you know, a team of special educators researching. But the other thing that I would need is input from central office, input from the board, how you would like to see us do that.
Questions from board members. Ms. Timmons?
Okay. Did I hear you say you needed, you needed six hours of training this summer before the new year starts? When do you feel that you need those six hours of training? Is that during this summer?
Yeah, well, what I would like to see is case managers to have a day with their paras, because we come to school one day before the kids.
Uh huh.
But that day is full of meetings. We typically, I typically get about 40 minutes with my paras that day, and I hand them my EPs for students they're working with, and I talk to them a little bit, but I can't train them on the procedures of my classroom.
Right. So you need additional day.
A day would be great. And I don't, you know, we can't just implement it because we have to, it's a contract issue. It's complicated, but I think to look at that as part of the plan would be integral because the paras don't feel well-prepared for the start, the first day of school. You know, they feel on their own. And I have fabulous paras, hard-working women who are very resourceful, but, you know, they want to know what the boss wants.
Absolutely.
You know?
Ms. Porter?
Nothing in here surprises me. This is exactly what teachers talk about. It's nice to have it documented. It's not just anecdotal. But these are enormous issues, and what you want to do, teachers, you're exactly right, that quote you put up there. The frustration is that they want to be there for their kids, and they want to be doing for their kids, and they're tied to paperwork. And, you know, another thing that you didn't mention that I know you know is just even organizing the meetings and, you know, getting everybody, all of the stakeholders and scheduling. And then if that falls apart and you have to reschedule, your time is spent organizing meetings so that you can fill out the paperwork that's going to give you an IP, IEP, that tells you what you're supposed to do with kids that you don't end up having time to do.
Right. It's very true.
It's just an enormous challenge. So I think it's really great that we have it documented, you can present that, and I'm glad to see that you have some ideas on how to address this. The problem for a special ed teacher is just, it's overwhelming. It is, and I know, I can see, and I know what I see in you is the same, that all special ed teachers feel that their hearts are breaking because they want to be with kids.
Yeah, we do.
Don't want to be doing all that paperwork and meeting organization. And another thing is testing. You didn't even...
Nope, didn't go there. Can't do that.
So, no, right? But it's all things that are pulling on your time away from students.
Yeah. And we, you know, there are things, it's very valuable to write IEP goals for a teacher.
Yes.
My mom was a special education teacher, and she never wrote an IEP goal. She had a child study team that did it, and that's lovely, but I really, I think it's a good process for me to write those goals.
Well, and the testing lets you know what their goals need to be.
Right. But when we do a reevaluation, and I have three or four related service providers also doing evaluations, and then I am putting their evaluation results in five places.
Mm-hmm.
That's clerical work, you know? So, you know, it's, there is a lot that an administrative assistant...
Well, and then you also have the fifth grade transition to middle school that you need to manage.
That's true. I only had four fifth graders this year. Last year I had eight, and that was, that was meetings all the time for the whole month of May, you know?
It is. And organizing between two schools, so, yeah.
Yeah. And four, because I have kids who go to all three middle schools.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Because we're district-wide.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I love the idea of an admin assistant that could be shared. I know it's not in the budget this year, but I would love to see more information on this for perhaps the next budget season. As many of you know, I came from DCYF where we had overwhelming caseloads, and I have participated in a number of IEP meetings and read IEPs, and it's, they're just extremely extensive. And I know from being invited to those meetings how difficult it is to schedule something with the sometimes, you know, eight or 10 participants that you need to have at the table to be able to do the work that you need to do, and all of the other ancillary reports that you have to read from children's outside therapists and some, you know, frequently medical doctors and some other things that have to be balanced. So I just think that's a brilliant and creative way to do it, if we can also maintain privacy but take some of that burden off. I'm curious about the increased paperwork from the Department of Ed. Is it like a copy-and-paste kind of situation, or do you actually have to write like a specific narrative? It's been about two years since I've read an IEP, and back then, it was like a particular specific narrative that was unique to each section. Is that still the same?
Yes, it's still the same. And they're asked, they had developed some dropdown menus, which this year they asked us not to use anymore. I didn't use them anyway, but some teachers did, and they were not that happy. And it's, you know, it's, we have to write an evaluation report, but then we also have to create an evaluation summary report which contains everyone's, so that is, falls on the case manager to get all of that information from the related service providers and put that into the report. And then there's also a couple of different places in the state database where that information needs to go.
Okay.
So I think, and I think we would have a little work to organize and to research and see what is the most efficient way. We need to look at best practices in districts that have admin assistants, I think.
Right. Because I imagine that you would want, as a case manager, you would want to be the person who actually read and compiled that information so that you had the most clear picture of what each student, you know, needs and what's best for them. But if it's simply taking that information that you've compiled and putting it into a database, that frankly seems kind of like busy work.
That part is busy work, yeah.
So...
Yeah. It's important for me to have all the reports from my related service providers, because they provide the full picture of that child, you know? But it's not really important for me to cut and paste for four hours on the weekend.
Talk into the microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm mumbling. You know, I do a lot of cutting and pasting on weekends of information that I've already read, and, you know, then we have a meeting and we review it all together. So we're discussing it all together in the same room with, you know, the whole team, the parents. So we do, you know, we will see that information regardless.
And the other question I had is, you said that you found this free program through the University of Nebraska-Lincoln regarding like training paras and learning how to...
Teachers.
Training teachers.
To train their paras.
Okay. So was it more about like management skills?
Yep.
Okay. And did you actually go through that program or like play with it at all, read it?
I went to the website because it, what I, it's a, it's a research article, and I have, it's cited in the bibliography, Steckelberg et al., I think it's 2007. So I wanted to make sure the website was up and running. And what I found is that they require you to have a district facilitator who signs up for the website, just to make sure that it's being used well, and that that facilitator would manage the online for the teachers in the district.
Okay.
You know?
All right. That's very interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I, everything that she says, that brought back memories of when I was teaching in New York at BOCES. And I understand where they're coming from and what they're looking to do. So I say God bless them, and whatever we can do to help, we got to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I saw, I saw your colleague, Ms. Raymond, who worked in New York shake her head when you referred to the BOCES and what they do. So I guess she's familiar with what, what you're familiar with, Mr. Mosher, so...
Yeah, BOCES was a real challenge.
Having been in the system and hearing so much, our paras are always asking for training. And here we have somebody saying, "This is what we need for special ed." And I believe we have probably less than 10 paras in the district who are not special ed paras. I know we have very few regular ed paras. So I would think that in itself, we have, we have Election Day, and we have Washington's birthday now that are professional development days. And I would think it would, would benefit teachers, paras, and students to provide that training, to see if we can't get a training program together, professional development for our paras. I guess the only thing that surprised me is when you said you had enough paras. I have never heard a teacher say that, but then I thought, "You're an intensive-needs para, and you probably have some students that have in their IEP a one-on-one para." Am I correct in that assumption?
I do. I have quite a few. Because I tend to have students with behavior challenges. So I do, at this point, this year, I have four children who have a one-on-one para in the IEP, and I'm getting a new one for next year, and I'm not losing any of the rich, so I'll have five next year on my caseload. And I have taught this same level of student in other states, and particularly in South Carolina, and I had one and a half paras for 12 children. And we were faking it. And we were faking it. We were doing our very best. In this district, I've consistently had six or seven pares in my classroom, and I'm very grateful for it. You know, but I want to make sure that those pares are getting what they need to do the most, to give us the most bang for our buck, because they want to. They love the students, that's why they're there. They wouldn't do the job if they didn't love the students, so.
I just, as a thought, I think you did Survey Monkey. Sharon, did you, you're the one that did Survey Monkey? I think it'd be real interesting to survey other special ed teachers in the district and classify them as intensive needs special ed teachers, regular special ed teachers, and see what their feeling is about the adequacy of para support for them. I wonder if all, all special ed teachers would feel that they have the appropriate amount of help that, that's what I'm seeing. I guess, when I heard Ms. Porter say, nothing surprised her, and I thought, wow, I was just shocked by one of the statements, so.
Well, and I think I'm in the sweet spot, because we also have, there is a decrease in para support when kids go to middle school as well. Like, I'm trying to prepare my students. And I see part of that, if we're doing our jobs, kids should be more independent in middle school.
Turn the microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm just going to move this. I think if we're doing our job in elementary school, we should be having more independence in middle school. But it does seem like a big leap to me. I don't know. But I agree with you. I think it would be interesting to ask the middle school teachers that question.
Well, I think not only the middle school, but also elementary. I know I tried at Amherst Street, and I believe we had three intensive needs classrooms there. And I know they just keep multiplying in the district. And I don't see a, I don't see the para numbers multiplying.
We have a big bubble in preschool of special needs children, a big bubble. It's coming.
I heard there's, there's a lot of students coming up that, that are very needy.
Yeah. And one thing that I did hear from teachers was the, you know, the absences of pares. And we don't have, we don't really have a pool of para subs that's effective. When your pares are out a lot, I really, some of the research pointed to the idea that if pares are better trained, you have less of that. They're more motivated to make it to work. I don't know. But I think part of, part of the frustration that I heard from colleagues was they're, they have a lot of absence, and there's nobody to fill that spot, so.
It's a problem. Ms. Raymond?
Does that make sense to me? I mean, I think, frankly, I think that this is a career that would have a significant level of compassion fatigue.
Absolutely.
So I would expect that would people, I'm not going to say burn out, but that people would need time off, maybe even unexpectedly, after particularly challenging days, or even a string of particularly challenging days. And you don't really ever get, it's, in my experience, this hasn't been, you know, a job where you can just be like, "You know what? Today I'm going to take it easy." Like, there's no, there's no option to have an easy afternoon, so. So I'm not sure. I think some training would help, but at the same time, I think it's having a larger pool would be the most immediate effect.
Yeah.
What, Ms. Porter?
Can you remind me, because I can't remember, on the Election Day and President's Day, do pares work and get paid on those days?
No. And that's why it's an issue for the...
Okay, that's why, so.
And I don't think, I mean, I think teachers also need their own PD.
Right.
So I wouldn't want to do both those days. I think...
Well, it makes those challenging days to do, because it involves more money to pay the pares to come in.
Right. So what I was proposing was, one, you know, the Election Day, because it's beginning of the year, it would give us a good, you know, if we had a day before school started to get things laid out well. We had a day in November to kind of regroup on, okay, how are we doing with what was presented in August? And then it could just be that six hours of flex time where a teacher could plan a breakfast meeting in January with her pares. And everybody gets together, "When can we do it?" And they're going to get paid for that one hour. And the teacher knows she has those six hours to pull from over the rest of the school.
So in total, how many hours would you be asking for in a year?
I mean, this is without doing the research that we're talking about doing next year. I would say 18 would be pretty optimal, you know, because it would give you those, the two days and then the flex time.
So you would need 18 hours of pay for pares over the year? But all special ed teachers, you would... But were the, the pares for, in, you know, not just an intensive needs class, but every special ed teacher would want to train their pares?
But I think, you know, you're talking about teachers are salaried.
No, 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 yeah, for the, right, right, right. But I'm thinking of, because I have the budget on my mind right now, because we're working on that. So it would, you would need to pay each para 18 hours of time to work over the course of a year with their teacher. So we maybe figure out what that comes to.
Can I just interject real quick? It would be 18, just so I'm hearing the conversation correctly? About 18 hours per special education para, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
Okay. And you would, so there would be some contractual pieces for the teacher to be with that para, correct? Like, in other words, there would be, are you just talking about exclusively special education teachers that would be conducting the training?
That's what we're thinking. And I was, I was wondering about that, because the teachers, I think being on salary, we wouldn't have to be paid for that flex time. We're already being paid for November. I wonder if it could be some sort of, just a stipend for teachers to go through the training, and then they would qualify their pares for that 18 hours? You know, that sort of a thing, where you wouldn't, you know?
And it could be voluntary, perhaps?
You know, I don't know. We need to kind of research it.
Or it could be part of a faculty meeting. You could use, you know, there are a certain number of faculty meetings over the course of the year, and maybe one or two or whatever faculty meetings for special ed teachers could be dedicated to this.
Yeah.
Perhaps.
Yeah, that could, that could be. I mean, I meet with my pares. They come to my house in August, and my husband cooks for them, and we do some training, you know? And I know a lot of special educators are doing that. I know there are issues with requiring people to do those kind of things.
It's not a systemic fix for...
We're trying, you know, I, I think, the big issue for me is the pares who are hourly to get reimbursed. I don't know. I guess it's more of a union, there are a lot of union questions there, and there are a lot of district questions about how the teachers, if and how they would have to be compensated.
Can I just ask about, on early release days, they encourage pares to stay, and they're paid for that time. Could those days be used for some training?
Some of them could, yeah. I know in April and May, my staff and I are busy doing CPI training. You know, and there is some, there's, there is PD for pares. It's just not done by their special educators, and some of that is useful, you know? We also have trainings that, as teachers, that we need to go to, so, but some of those early releases would be available. So we could look at that as well. I think we'd have to talk to building principals, though, because they have things they have to fulfill also on those days.
There are district initiatives that people need to be trained in, yeah.
Exactly. So, you know, there are a lot of moving parts. It's, I put it in simple terms, but it's not really simple.
Ms. Raymond?
So, something you said a minute ago about meeting with them in August, kind of everyone volunteering to do that, which is lovely, kind of struck me. For, for people who don't do that, don't have the availability or whatever, how do they, when do they learn who their students are going to be and have an opportunity to read and understand those Herculean IEP packets?
I can't speak for the whole district. In my building, I can't speak for the whole district, I'm sorry, I keep doing that. In my building, the pares receive their IEPs the day before school starts, and then we all go to different meetings all day. So they get about 40 minutes with me, all of them, to kind of talk about it. So they might get 10 minutes each, or five, or, you know?
How many students, like ballpark average number, would each para be responsible for understanding that IEP so they could deliver?
Our instructional pares have a bigger burden. You know, they might have two to four children in a classroom, and they might be in a couple different classrooms during the day. So they have not a few children to learn. My pares usually have one to three students that they need to learn.
So, okay.
Well, and they do, I mean, they have talked to me about that. They want to prepare, you know?
Right. Well, I would imagine most people would have some idea, because kids are each unique, and what worked in the past with one may not work at all with this other one. And so you would want to have some preparation.
Yeah.
Whether it's extraordinarily helpful or not.
Yeah, yeah. Just to know the document well. You know, my pares do a lot of studying on that document, so.
Mr. Mosher, do you have anything?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. It was interesting. I feel like this is, it's not a board meeting, but certainly we're talking about things that need to be talked about. This is education and kids. So I, this, Mr. Hoffman, I cannot thank you enough. Sorry we missed it.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'm glad it's being televised and taped, because maybe some of our community members will see the work that our teachers do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay?
So I know it's difficult speaking about money. I know the, you know, I've been in the district for 15 years, and the, but the operating budget can only grow so much. Inflation eats up most of it, and it's always been a problem. It, you know, the needs increase, but the budget will only increase so much. I think long-term, we have to think of maybe another source than the city operating budget for funding there. And, you know, grants are one thing. The challenge with grants is we're a public entity, we're not a nonprofit entity, so there's a lot of sources of funding that aren't available to us that should be. And there are workarounds to that, and, you know, and it's something that we need to consider. It's maybe some of these out-of-the-box options, perhaps creating a foundation that's aligned with the district's mission to fund things that aren't necessarily full-time positions, but training, equipment, those sorts of things. There are a lot of districts that have done this. Boston's the biggest. We can do it here. And I think it's something we need to think about doing. It's been a problem since I've been here. I don't see it changing. So I think in terms of, you know, if we're talking about training for pares or equipment for a newcomer program or all the things that we need, maybe we need to think of doing something like that long-term. And our next project is, if we can get this project right, I think a lot of things will come into place. Patty Davidson and Danine Robey did a project on how to increase family engagement in Elm Street Middle School. And it's her second year in the program, and they've been fantastic. So I'm just going to give the floor to Patty and Danine now.
Thanks, thanks for having us tonight.
You're welcome.
I'm Danine Robey, and I teach eighth grade social studies at Elm Street Middle School. And this is Patty Davidson. She teaches seventh grade science. And we're really happy for the opportunity to talk to you tonight, because since we presented in May, our goal moving forward has, we've moved forward so much since May, so we're really excited to tell you about what we've done. We're hoping to get, to make this a district initiative and not just an Elm Street initiative. Patty and I have been looking at Elm's family engagement for 15 years, since we took a course called Parents on Your Side 15 years ago. And back then, we saw the research about how family engagement and student learning equals student success. And so in the last 15 years, though, we've seen how family involvement has decreased at our school. And so we thought, with our teacher leader program and our principal, Ian Atwell, having a goal of family outreach, we thought it was a great time to take a look at our family engagement. What type of outreach do we have? What type of engagement do we need? And how can we get there? So we asked the question, "How can Elm Street Middle School increase family engagement?" So first, what we did is we went back to the research that we had done so long ago. And sure enough, the research still shows that students with involved families are more successful. They attend school regularly, they pass classes, and all of those things that make a student successful. The research also confirms that as students get older, their parents become less involved. And we asked the question, "Why is that?" Well, it seems kind of just a natural, you know, growing up thing. They become more independent, and the parents kind of step back. However, it really is so important that families still stay involved in their students' education as they become middle schoolers and high schoolers. And it's really seen, and you and I know this, it's seen as the single biggest problem facing our schools, is that family engagement. So we asked, how are we going, what are we going to do? So we went and we read many, many articles and some books, and a lot of them are by this lady, Karen Map. She is a senior lecturer at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. She's been researching family and community engagement face for over 20 years. She worked as the deputy superintendent of family engagement for Boston Public Schools. She served as a consultant to the U.S. Department of Education on Family Engagement. And currently, she's the consultant to Scholastic on Family and Community Engagement. So she was really our kind of go-to guru on everything. And in her book, Powerful Partnerships, we really looked at her four core beliefs about family engagement. She describes how sometimes educators inadvertently look at our families through what we call deficit lenses, thinking the families are part of the student's problem. And we really realized that that's really where we need to start. We need to, as teachers, we need to make sure we're examining our core beliefs and understanding that, you know, families, all families have dreams for their children and want the best for them. All families have the capacity to support their children's learning. Families and school staff are equal partners, and the responsibility for cultivating and sustaining partnerships among school, home, and community rests primarily with the school staff, especially the school leaders. So we need to have those understandings as teachers in order to move forward. And really, we want to focus on these three kind of core areas, link to learning, relational, and collaboration. Link to learning. That means we want to make our events at the school and communication about learning. That's what, that's what families need us to do. And we want relational. That means looking at families as assets. And collaborative, being true partners with families. So after we did all the research, we did some data collection at Elm Street. We collected attendance data on open house and parent-teacher conferences. We conducted a family survey on events and communication. Plus, we surveyed other schools about their family engagement. We used the data to make some immediate changes here, this year at Elm Street. We shared our presentation with our PTO and our PERC Committee. Our PERC Committee is our Parent Informational Resource Committee. And we shared our presentation with the faculty. We changed, we went ahead and changed our sixth grade with the results of our survey. We went ahead and changed our sixth grade orientation night. We, on our survey, the parents... We, on our survey, the parents asked to have the sixth grade teachers attend our sixth grade orientation night. And we invited our sixth grade teachers and they were willing absolutely to come. So that was an easy fix and it went really well. We are planning a back-to-school bingo night for Monday, August 27. And we also surveyed the staff and are planning to try a staggered start for our open house. We're revamping it. A lot of feedback from the survey was that Elm Street doesn't have a lot of parking. That might be a surprise to you. And so we, we're going to try to do a staggered start and that will take care of some of the parking. It will also take care of those parents that have more than one child in the building. And it will also allow us to have parents be able to see all of their Unified Arts teachers instead of just the one that their child is attending that night. And Patty's going to talk you, talk to you a little bit more about some of the research and what we'd like to do moving forward, our proposals.
So part of the Powerful Partnerships book. Oh, gosh. Duh, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Part of the Powerful Partnership book explains, thank you, a rubric used to evaluate schools on their family engagement practices. And we went through the checklist for Elm Street and we found that we really have a lot to celebrate. And we have some areas that we need to work on, but we feel like a few more steps, we can move pretty quickly from a come-if-we-call school at the basic level to an open-door school proficient. However, we learned that it's really difficult for teachers or schools to work on family engagement in isolation. In another one of Dr. Map's books, Beyond the Bake Sale, there's a call to action at the district level for family engagement. The research suggests that family engagement should be considered as important as instruction and assessment in the organizational leadership of the district. So the Nashville School Board policy on school, community, and home relations should really probably be updated to reflect the most current research on family engagement, that link-to-learning, relational, and collaborative piece. We would suggest investigating what other districts have for family engagement policies. Both Boston and New York Public Schools were highlighted in the Beyond the Bake Sale book. Also, Lawrence Public Schools have a really great family resource center. We did a phone interview with them and are planning to attend one of their strategic meetings next year. All three of those districts used focus groups to help create a strategic plan and then develop a mission statement. It was cited as the most important part of the process, talking to the families about what they want and need. So some of our suggestions moving forward, we feel like the efforts should be coordinated by forming a district-level committee to steer the efforts on family engagement. Also, one person per school should be designated as the liaison for family engagement. This would help coordinate efforts at each school. This step was identified by Boston and New York City as an integral part of their strategic plan. We saw the need for this in our data collection. Many of the staff were not even aware of what's being done at their own school because there's little pockets of different groups working on different initiatives. We toured the Arlington Street Community Centered and have started promoting their programs at our school. And what a great resource that could become. A next step would be to coordinate the resources available for each school so it's fair and equitable. We think the district also needs to develop some consistency for those critical transitions from elementary school to middle school and then middle school to high school. When we were working on our sixth grade orientation night this spring, we saw that as an area for improvement as well. Some consistency and communication between schools could really help eliminate that confusion for students and parents transitioning. In addition, a big piece is the professional development. We feel that the district should be offering professional development on family engagement for the staff. It should be a priority for faculty meetings, early releases, and in-service days. All the research we found shows that teachers need training in family engagement. The topic is seriously lacking in pre-service training as well as in-service training. Teachers want to partner with parents, with families, but they don't know how to do it effectively. So at Elm Street Middle School, our PERC committee is taking a Harvard course online this summer about family engagement. And we're also doing a book study on that Powerful Partnerships book. And then our plan for next year is to offer some kind of just-in-time PD throughout the school year for our faculty, focusing on the link-to-learning, relationship-building, and collaboration. Danine and I are very interested in participating in the teacher-leader program again next year if possible, because we would like to continue to collect data to evaluate if our interventions are making a difference. This would really be true action research to follow up on the changes that we made with another survey. And then we'd like to specifically look at some quantitative data, if and how the interventions are affecting student achievement. We'd like to share what we've done with Penachuck and Fairgrounds and that would help with the consistency piece. We're really proud of what we learned this year and the changes that we've already helped to implement at our school. We have a lot of great ideas for next year. We're lucky that we have the support of our principal and a great, hard-working PERC committee that works with us. We can see that in order to move forward quickly and efficiently, that family engagement needs to be a district priority from the cradle to the career. Thank you for listening and we really appreciate your support.
I have a question.
Ms. Timmons.
Yes.
Can I?
Oh, sorry.
We're going to take you first, Mr. Mosher, because you're always so patient. Thank you, and sometimes I forget.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. You know, listening to, talking about family engagement, and it brings back the memories of when I was in the grade school. And every night, we always had the roundtable on homework. And there was always time when my mother would sit with me and go over the homework. And it brought to mind about the amount of homework that kids have today and how long it takes them to get done. Now, if they had the family engagement like, like I experienced, they could be done with it very quickly and come away with quite a bit of learning from it, both in mathematics, spelling, history, and whatever else the homework consisted of. I remember, you know, when I had the problem with three times six and the exasperation that my mother felt and I felt it because I had my kids go to Maine Duncible and the homework that they had, some of it I was not qualified to help them with, and neither was their mother. But I find that there's, there are families out there that they look at the homework and say, well, I don't know anything about that, you know, and they can't get involved with it because they, they don't have a way to engage with the, with the student, with the child, to go over the, the homework with them. Because they, in some cases, and I don't say all, but I say in some cases, the parents do not understand what someone is doing, especially with the new mathematics that they have and some of the things that they're discussing nowadays. And I can see where family engagement is a very important thing because this opens up the kid's mind and reinforces what they, what they experience during the day. And I think that's very important that they do that. They, because if they're once they're out of school, you know, it's, you know, it's, well, we're out of school now and, you know, the rest of it can just go by the side. But you have family engagement that pulls them back to where they should be and reinforces what they should know so that the next day when they go in, they're fortified with the, the amount of learning and the review that is possible by having the parents that understand or know something about. You have, you know, let's say to the, you know, the other ones there about, you know, the language barrier sometimes. And, you know, knowing that in Nashville, we have 65 different languages that they go on and, you know, all the kids like, I know that kind of connect from Kenya and all over. And some of them didn't know what a refrigerator was or what a push toilet was. And yet we look to them and say, well, we've got to get family engagement. Well, I agree with that. It's absolutely necessary because it keeps, keeps the student, the child focused. And I think that is one of the things that we have to look at, is keeping them focused on the, not only the schoolwork, but on the social aspects that they're going to encounter day by day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Thank you. She was saying we have to train the paras and we're saying we kind of have to, to train the families. So that's part of the professional development that we feel that the teachers need to build their capacity in that area. You know, it's simple things that you can do for your open house with that link to learning, to really like break it down for parents, for families, like this is something that you can go home and do, you know, in your open house letter, you-can statement, simple things that they can do. And as far as the ELL piece goes, the next presenters are going to be talking about ELL families, so stay tuned for that one.
Nice teaser.
Yep.
Ms. Porter.
I'll just skip me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons.
It's okay, okay. I know I'm not very vocal, but I want to be vocal on this. Family engagement is very important. I can see it in my own family. One is that my daughter, that's very, very engaged in her family, children go to better colleges, better everything. It just go up to, so I agree. I see it on both ways. Not that my son is not engaged, so if you hear this, you're engaged too, but not at her level, okay? Secondly, I want to speak a little bit about the Arlington Street Community Center. The family engagement there, I've gone to their PTA, their PTO meetings that went from a few to many because of family engagement. They actually bring their children into the community center and those children are allowed to be in the community center at the same time the PTO is happening. And that engagement is very important. And Sherri Fulton over there built the PTO from just a few members to a lot of members. And it's, it's really heartening to see that the, the PTO is increasing because of the Arlington Street Community Center, because it's something else for those children to do. They bring the families together. And I think that's very important, too. And hopefully, we'd be able to do that throughout the city. We're trying to do that. But that, I see very, very, it's very important that they, together, because those children see what their parents are doing and, and the parents is also seeing what the children are doing. And therefore, they work collaboratively together and it's a win-win for the school district, the children, and the parents. I find, and the ELL is also in there as well. There's a lot of ELL students that go to the Arlington Street Community Center because there's a high population over in that area. You'll see, if you come to the Arlington Street Summer Kickoff, who's there? And you'll see there's a lot of ELL learners there as well as parents. So it's really important that family engagement is in our school district. That's the only way you can get the level that you need to get, to get them into.
Yes, and a commercial advertisement there. Thank you. The Arlington Street Community Center is having their summer kickoff on Friday from four to seven. Face painting, hot dogs. It's going to be great.
All types of goodies, raffles. And we're really going to have a good time on Friday. And I just think that it's important that parents come out for that. So, yes, I'm, I'm promoted.
Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent. Ms. Porter.
Okay, as a recently retired teacher who is now in the Board of Ed, which is a very different world, I want to say how much I'm enjoying this evening. I feel like this is what the work of the Board should be. This, this is the connection that the Board needs with the school because it's all about kids, what's best for kids. So this is so refreshing and I know we're looking at ways to improve which we should. So thank you. This is amazing. I want to say also that now looking at things from a different perspective, being on the Board, as I'm listening, I'm trying to connect to things that are going on, on a district level. So we're having a big kickoff. The Board and the administration is going to be working on a strategic plan, which I'm also involved with, with Dr. Mosley. And I would like to call on some of you when we're working on that. Because what we're, and I would appreciate, I know Dr. Mosley would as well, any input, we're looking for a new vision or mission statement. If some of you've been here a while and you're familiar with the, the one that we have right now, it needs some work. So, so that's one part. I'm thinking that this community involved, that parent involvement piece is kind of an umbrella because it's, you know, special ed, ELL. Every student population has a family. And the more we can involve the families, the better we're going to be. I'm also thinking of this as the, from the perspective of the construction committee that's going on. And I'm thinking in particular of a school like Mount Pleasant, where I worked, which is a walking school, we see our families every day at dismissal. We take them out and, and people are picking them up. And so, you know, that's, I know there's money and I know everything comes down to money and we're looking at, you know, do we renovate? Do we rebuild? Do we do what? But like, it's, it's really a serious thing to think about not having walking schools, I think, especially for community. That's just a natural way to connect with families every day. So I love your, your saying, cradle to career. That's really great.
No trademark on that. That was in that class. I was.
That's really awesome.
I jumped, I was up this morning at four o'clock this morning doing, it's so exciting. I'm just like really thrilled about what we're learning.
It's great. This is the stuff that should keep us going and keep us awake. So I, I really appreciate, I feel like this is personally the, the shot of enthusiasm that I need to keep going on the Board, so thank you.
We're really excited about it because when we started the project, we thought the, we wanted, we wanted to go big. And we were thinking family engagement, district level. It seemed a little overwhelming. So then we really focused on what we knew in our own four walls, Elm Street. So we did that and it really has taken off with the help of our principal. So we're really excited after we presented in May and we, we have presented a few times to different people, then we really started to find out that there were, it's important that we look at it as a district because some things that we were doing, we were hitting obstacles because of the communication between the schools, between the middle schools. And, and when we were looking at just the district policy on family engagement and seeing that it really did not reflect the current research, that really kind of said, okay, so this is where we need to start. And hearing from Dr. Mosley that they, you know, one of, you know, the strategic plan is to kind of get a focus group together, I believe, is what I've heard personally. And it's exciting to us. So we would, we would love to be part of that in any way that you would like to invite us to be part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a son who will be at Elm Street in two years, so yay, I'm excited about this new. new orientation.
It's awesome.
Um, I'd just like to say that, um, two, two things. For me, um, this comes under the idea of educating the whole child, um, and making sure that we're, we're teaching them on multiple levels at the same time, and I think that's really important. Um, I, I also think, um, in my generation, um, we tend to, I'm saying "we" as a generational thing, tend to be more isolated, I think, than I recall being when I was a child. So any effort to help, um, families and students have that sense of community that has, in my opinion, been lost a little bit, um, in the last few years, I mean, I think is, is going to be good because I think that it helps kids to have that feeling of, um, safety and caring that helps them to develop emotionally. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I chair the policy committee. Um, and so I've been trying to, um, focus on our oldest, um, policies that haven't been updated since like the eighties or nineties. But as I looked at your slide, this one hasn't been updated since two thousand and eight. So perhaps, I, I don't want to take up your time over the summer, but perhaps when everyone returns in the fall, I would love to invite you to a policy committee meeting to discuss how we can make our policy reflect the most up-to-date research, um, because I think that's important for our district. So I'm glad I'm here and that you've brought that to my attention.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have one question. Well, how do you, um, I'm sorry. No, I'm in here.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Oh, okay. How do you keep parents engaged throughout the year? Um, I know in the beginning of the year, you have all these programs that, um, tools begin in the beginning of the, the fall, but throughout the year, what is the plans to keep these parents engaged?
Well, currently, our PERC committee offers several events through the year in addition to, we're starting back to school bingo next year, the night before school starts. But we have open house. And then we do, um, uh, Family Fair. Last year, we showed the film Screenagers on the effect of screen time on the development of the brain and then had many, um, organizations in the cafeteria with tables set up of things not to do on the screen, the Y and the Boy Scouts and the Girl's, and, uh... Um, and then we also, in the spring, have a, a celebration of learning that we call Watch What Your Child Can Do Night, where we invite the families to come in and see what their children have been learning. Um, in addition to those events, we've really been focusing on the communication, two-way meaningful communication. Mr. Atwell actually gave us release time this year to make those phone calls and document them. Um, we actually did a little PD at our last faculty meeting about how to make a positive family phone call. So those are some of the things that we currently have in place and we're looking towards building the capacity with really kind of revamping that open house to make it more about learning. Like, wouldn't it be great if we taught the families a little literacy or numeracy activity that then they could go home and start using instead of throwing paper at them, right? Could we look at the communication to make what they call actionable communication, right? With those "you can" things, something small, a step to improve that would actually affect the student's achievement? So we have lots of ideas, some good stuff going on, but lots more to do.
Thank you. That's perfect.
I will say, I attended the Elm Street, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mosher, did you have something you wanted to add? Or am I hearing an echo? Okay.
No, that was, that was a loud, uh, automobile that went by.
Thank you. Um, I did attend the Elm Street ELL Book Pizza Night.
Yes.
And you could see there, I was amazed at the number of people there, but what they did, they offered people, the student at Elm Street, four books, and they could bring their siblings and each sibling was able to choose a book. And I was amazed by the number of, of families I saw, not, not only parents, but they brought grandparents with them, uh, siblings, cousins. It was, I, I think they had many, many more attending that than what they had anticipated. So that kind of ties what we've heard together about the ELL and the community building, but that was an, just a, uh, excellent event. And I do want all of you to know that the next curriculum and evaluation meeting, uh, the third Monday in July is, uh, on PD. So if you would like to come and maybe offer some of your suggestions or listen to what's, what's going on, uh, I think that would be interesting because I think that's what we're talking about, uh, for special ed here and so many other things. It's, it's the growth and thinking about much more, uh, about educating the whole child, the family. So, uh, just know that the third Monday in July is going to be PD at Curriculum and Evaluation, so, thank you. Anybody else at this point? Thank you so very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. You're a wonderful audience, very thoughtful and, no, I appreciate it. It's excellent. It's good. Thank you.
I agree with you, Mr. Mosher.
So our final, uh, presenters kind of tie in a couple of projects that we've heard already. They take the ELL piece that we heard from Sharon and they take the family engagement piece that we just heard from Patty and Deneen and tie it all together. So Dr. Deborah St. Lawrence and Jennifer Chantler are gonna talk to you a little bit about how to engage ELL parents.
I'm Dr. Deborah St. Lawrence. I am an ELL teacher at Nashua South. Um, this is my third year in the district, my thirty-third year of teaching.
Um, I'm Jennifer Chantler. I teach at Elm Street Middle School, um, and it is my thirty-first year of teaching and my seventeenth year in the district.
Wow.
So when we started the Teacher Leader Program, um, I don't think, neither of us realized that the other had the passion for ELLs that we do. Um, and to boot, we live across the street from each other. Um, our children have attended Merrimack High School together. So we bonded a bit and then through that, we found that we have this, this passion, this love for ELLs, our, our ELL students here in, um, Nashua. So this is a look at our school district. Eleven point three percent of our district are ELLs. Eleven point three percent in New Hampshire is, is our ELL population. And servicing those twelve hundred-plus students, we have twenty-three and a half ELL teachers, thirteen ELL paraprofessionals. And as was spoken about earlier, there are sixty different languages that our children speak in the seventeen schools. So Jennifer and I were trying to rack our brains to figure out what we wanted to do that was going to help our students. So we realized that there's a lot happening at the level for helping our students directly in the schools. We know we have amazing teachers that are doing all of that work. Oh, dear Lord.
I heard that.
And if you hear that now. Um, and so we decided, maybe we need to take it into a different step. We need to go and, and check out the, um, the parents, the families. How can we get them involved? And how can we get them to realize what their roles are? Because we have students or their families who come from other countries, all of our ELL students, and they may not know how to be like the American parents, how to be involved like us, like the American parents do. I personally, I had two boys go through the Merrimack school system. I went to every single open house, every single parent conference for both boys, um, K through twelve. But parents, you know, our ELL parents don't know how, they don't know that that's what's expected or that that's something that they are allowed to do. Um, many of our students come from, um, countries where the, the belief is that, you know, we'll let the, the teachers take care of it and we're not gonna tread on their ground, they're, you know, they're, we trust them. So we decided we wanted to figure out how we could educate the parents or ELL students about the Nashua school system and the part that they play in the system. So our students, our families, when they come to America, they need to adapt to many things. A new language, a new environment, whole new set of rules in and out of the school as well as social norms. We also found out from research, as was stated earlier, that students who, with parents who are involved, and this goes for any student, not just ELLs, but especially for our ELLs, if the parents are involved, the students do better and they will complete high school and actually graduate. The No Child Left Behind Act also said that, um, parents are supposed to be provided with literature on effective parent involvement. Well, we need to get that literature out to them. Our parents don't speak our language, they don't speak the English language, so we need to find a way to get this information out to them. So what are we gonna do? We decided we wanted to develop a product that is accessible, practical, and is, and sustainable for family involvement. And this is where Jennifer's gonna take over and show you a bit about, um, what we did and I have copies of what we have in progress so far.
So what we looked into, um, a lot more research than we shared, because you can look at the other PowerPoint, um, we went through and said, "What are the most important things our parents need to know and how can we help them help themselves?" So the packet that we created, our Newcomers Guide for Parents, would be in the home language and of course, the first page is easy because it just says the district's name and invites parents to be part of their child's education. And again, we would really like this to be translated into their home language. On the second page, we talked to our, um, secretaries. What are the main reasons that, um, someone calls the school? And so we thought it'd be really helpful to have a little cheat sheet, English on one side and the home language on the other. So if parents need to call and say, "I am coming to, uh, pick my child up early, um, please have them ready," they can read it in English and know what they're saying in English. And these are the top four things that, um, the secretary said are the reasons that the school is contacted. On our third page, we thought we would share supportive family habits. And what's really important about this page is you do not need to be American school literate, meaning every single parent does not have to know what happens in American schools. They just have to be a parent or a family member. There's nothing in there, none of the suggestions require a parent to know how to do the new math or to know how to spell the spelling list. But they're all things parents can do to participate in their child's education, encourage their child to be responsible for their learning and to be part of their learning without needing to have, had been a student themselves in the American educational system. Um, one of the, one of the suggestions we have is just put the cool, school calendar on the fridge and then at night, look at the calendar. What's happening tomorrow? Is it early release? What are your plans? And just conversations. Um, so we have several suggestions there and, and we really hope that these suggestions don't offend any families, but invite them in to participate. And again, this page would be in the home language. The page after that is, um, the top three are the school personnel, that parents and families would be a, a consistent adult through the elementary years or the middle school years or the high school years. Of course, the ELL teacher, the guidance counselor, and the nurse. And our nurses in our schools really are, uh, an extension of the healthcare system. And a lot of our parents will call our nurses instead of calling the school if a child's going to be absent because they're comfortable with that person. They've had that person for several years. So we just wanted to reiterate to our new families that this is the person you can contact. Please feel free. And then again, we had some American customs, so they would feel comfortable and, and know what is, something that is courteous to do in America. And again, nothing in there is, um, hopefully going to offend anyone, but it is just gonna help them become, um, comfortable in visiting our schools and talking to our, um, teachers. And then on the next page after that, um, we had a quick synopsis of what the report card may or may not look like. I know those are a little influx, but the least amount of verbiage we thought would be helpful. Um, the high school, uh, piece is a little, um, concerning because almost all of our ELL parents, without having actual statistics, do not have access to regular internet. They do not know that this is their role and responsibility. They don't go on to X2 to see the progress reports or the report cards. So, uh, high school for our ELL families, we probably need to do a little something more advanced than we are doing, but, you know, this is what they can look at.
The report cards at the high school level do not go home in paper form. They are only on X2.
Right. So, so that's something we probably need to address to help the, you know, the families understand, even the students. I'm not sure how the high school students all look at their report cards because they have to look at them online.
They go online and look at them.
They do.
They go online, look at them, and we can print off if we need to for our, our parents.
And then the next page, we thought would be important for, um, families is to actually have a copy of the, uh, calendar, a paper copy. And the very last page, we thought, um, it would be important to families to realize that they too can go to the public library because our public library is an incredible resource. It has, um, lots of computers, uh, lots of very helpful staff, and at the library, um, is where the navigators meet and families are allowed to actually go there for help outside of education. I know there's tax help there come February and other things our library offers. So that's what we have in a nutshell. Uh, we thought this would be something we could give to our ELL families so that they could participate in their child's education without feeling that they need to know the American school system. Um, and then since we created this, we did some more things. And I'll let Deb share.
So since our original presentation back in May, we've spoken with, um, Bob Chopra, who's the Director of Student Services in ELL, and had him look over this, um, this, this guide that we have put together. And he was very pleased to see it and thought it was a very useful document. We also spoke with Claudia Castano, our ELL Community Outreach Coordinator for the two high schools, and she was in awe of the work and, and what this could mean for our parents because if we have this translated into multiple languages and we can hand it to the parents at registration, they can immediately start to see what their role is and what they can do here in the United States, here in the Nashua School District. Um, and we also, Jennifer and I have already coordinated a meeting, um, with navigators for August twenty-second to speak with them to get more information so that hopefully next year, if we can do the Teacher Leader Program, which we would love to do, um, we're going to finish this product and get it dispersed to the schools so that, um, all the schools K through twelve can use this document.
Uh, yeah, Robert Chopra said that he would like to see some version of this, um, on our school website. Of course, that's in process, but he was pleased about it. And he, um, asked us to speak with the navigators specifically because they're with, uh, one greater Nashua in the United Way program and get some feedback from what maybe some of the people that they've worked with, their experiences coming to America have been and if we missed anything, what else could we add? So that's where we are, in process.
That's great. Questions? Uh, Ms. Raymond?
I'll start. I could not love this more. Um, I think it's brilliant. Um, I've been out, um, many times to speak with families who are new to the area, who...
I've been out many times to speak with families who are new to the area, who don't speak English, and who have no idea what they're supposed to do. And I can tell you, trying to, to do this as a social worker who also doesn't know what they're supposed to do, it was like the blind leading the blind, and something like this would have been extraordinarily helpful for everyone all around. I'm curious, because I don't know, who do we use for translation services, and do we know anything about the costs of having this translated? I know at the state, we use Lutheran, and we also used a company out of Massachusetts, and getting legal documents translated into, say, Congolese was time-consuming and expensive.
Well, we have our Spanish translators available. I know that when we need translators, I go through Bob Chopra, and I do not know the cost.
Okay. Oh, you just said Title III funds would be allocated?
When we wrote the new ELL courses, we had the course expectations translated into our top five languages.
He's not able to hear you, so.
Sorry. Title III funds would be allocated for any translation. When we wrote our new ELL content courses, Robert Chopra provided Title III funds to provide, to translate our course expectations into the top five languages that our students spoke at the high school level.
Great. I like that, because that means we don't need to budget for it, because I, I would love to see this being used as soon as possible. I, I just adore it.
Ms. Porter.
I, I think this is the perfect extension of good teaching practices. We want to be explicit with our students. We also need to be explicit with our families and not just assume that they're going to kind of figure it out by osmosis. So, this is good teaching practices extended out, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mosher, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
You know, another thing to, to talk about the resources that we have around Nashua right now, that brings to mind, you know, like I was saying about the schoolwork many years ago, but 70 years ago, where I was 13 years old in, in Flatbush, we had a very mixed neighborhood with, you know, Irish people, a lot of Italian people, a lot of Jewish people, a lot of people that, you know, you could go over to the subway station and you could listen to the, the, the conversations that were going on there and between the different people. And one of the things that was brought to mind to me was, well, my wife is from Cuba, and, you know, you talk about the Spanish language, and there were some expressions, idioms from different parts of the Latin area, that you say it in normal Spanish, that it may be a very nasty phrase. And the difference in the pronunciation and the, the use of Spanish between the Cuban and the Argentine and Puerto Rican is a world difference. But the, the thing is that when I was growing up, when I was 13 years old and, and getting around in, in Flatbush, we didn't have computers in the libraries. We didn't have the, the libraries, we didn't have all of the things that people have today to, to help them find their way. We didn't have all of these things. We had, still had trolley cars, you know, and things like that, and got around on, for a lot, for a lot, myself included, we got around on bicycles. But without the resources that they have today, a lot of people that we have in the, in the city, whether it's Manchester or Nashville or Kane or wherever, they would be lost by having to find somebody that would be able to help interpret or show them, or just illustrate, you know, a situation, or a, a pamphlet that you hand out that's got different languages already on it, that you'd be looking to explain something in Hindi, or, you know, to Pakistani, or to somebody in Belgian, or speaking in Turkish. You know, it's, we have so much difference here than what they had years ago, and it, it boggles the mind that we can assimilate so many of these people and bring them in and get them started and learn the, the language, learn the, the social idioms, all of the different things that we need to survive, have to flourish in, in America today. So, I really congratulate you guys on what you're doing and what you're trying to do. It's so different, and I've seen so much in my eighty-some odd years, that it's amazing, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to add, my personal hope for this is this becomes a, a family way, and we pass this down to our children. So, any family that starts these involvement, when their children grow up, they are naturally involved as well. So, our Nashua community just gets richer.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. This is, this has been a, a wonderful evening. What breaks my heart is I look at some of the other topics that presenters had, and I know Mr. Hoffman sent us a video, but it would have been nice to hear them and, and be able to ask them questions too, because I, it's obvious, a lot of work and passion went into this project, so, thank you. Please know, it is deeply appreciated, and thank you for everything you do for our kids every day of the year. Thank you. Thank you. [applause]
Thanks for coming out on a school night on the last week of school.
Right. Thank you. And staying twice as long as we had originally scheduled. So, I appreciate the donation of your time. This is not a meeting, so we don't need an adornment?
No, we don't, we don't, we didn't.
That's right.
We didn't have a cord.
All right, so I guess that's it. Good night, Mr. Mosher.
Good night.
Good night.